I will now call the May 19, 2014 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I want to welcome those in attendance and those that might eventually listen to our city web, the audio part. The next item is the consent agenda, other items that need to be pulled, if not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levsey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing vacating Country Club South, lot 36 utility easement.
Your honor, for this public hearing for VAC-1-14-4272, I'd like to introduce two exhibits. Exhibit number one, city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, location map, map of proposed area of the vacation affidavit publication as advertised in examiner, January 25, 2014, vacation application with applicant's explanation of the request, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing. Second exhibit includes letter dated February 20, 2014, from Engineering Solutions regarding KCPN-L. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay, Mr. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, your honor and councilmen. And before you this evening is a request to vacate utility easement as a part of platting or replating a part of lot 36 in Country Club South. And along with this will be a request before you this evening for that final plat in order that the applicant can proceed with development of duplex property in this area. Really, the only utility in this easement currently is a KCPN-L facility, which will be relocated in order to still service this area. And it has been some time since this was heard before the planning commission, actually back in February. Reason for that delay is the fact that there were some legal documentation that needed to be cleaned up and clarified, especially in relation to that existing utility. So this is a little bit more complicated and complex than a standard vacation of utility easement because there isn't existing electrical utility in this area. With that, though, staff believes that everything is in order to proceed with vacating this easement. Planning commission did recommend approval back in February unanimously, and staff has noted any issues with that with just one recommendation. Again, that's just simply the relocation of those existing utility service lines. So certainly stand for any questions if there are any. Otherwise, the applicant's engineer is present. Should there be any questions?
Are there any questions, or Ms. Allen from the council? Seeing none, the applicant like to come and be sworn in.
It's Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lees, Missouri. On behalf of the applicant, I don't have a lot to say on this one. It's like I say, it's basically just a vacation of utility easement so that we can get kind of two little pieces of a lot combined into make one and actually build up a lot over there, so.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of? In favor of the vacating property? In opposition to? Opposition to? Of the comments from the council? Seeing none, close this public hearing. And I'd like to introduce it.
First reading of Bill Number 4314, an ordinance vacating a utility easement on Lot 36, Country Club South A subdivision in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4314, an ordinance vacating a utility easement on Lot 36, Country Club South A subdivision in Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levsey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4488.
Next, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4315.
Our introduce it, your honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4315, an ordinance approving final plat, Lot 36A, Country Club South, a replat of a portion of Lot 36, Country Club South, and part of the northwest one quarter of the southwest one quarter of Section 29 Township 49, Range 30, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4315, an ordinance approving final plat, Lot 36A, Country Club South, a replat of a portion of Lot 36, Country Club South, and part of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 29 Township 49, Range 30, City of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levsey.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4489.
Next, we have a public hearing on the capital improvement program, better known as CIP. Mr. Hawley.
Your honor, I'd like to first introduce one exhibit, which includes city council information form dated for the May 19, 2014 city council meeting from Jim Hawley, Assistant Director of Community Development. PowerPoint presentation slides from May 19 city council meeting, city council information form dated May 19, 2014, planning commission memorandum dated April 28, 2014, and public notice submitted to the examiner and published on April 26, 2014. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of this public hearing.
Mr. Hawley, behalf of the city.
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. Tonight, we're looking at the 2014-15 to 2016-2020 capital improvements program. And let's start off with a picture of America's Community Bank renovation, which I think has been a real hit in the community and certainly is a building that really begins to set a tone for downtown. I'd like to start by thanking council members Quabell and Edmondson and Fowler for your participation in this year's CIP. Thank you very much, as well as our planning commissioners, Chairman Billups and Member Duhon, and Parks Commissioner George DeBert. I also like to thank staff, including city administration, the Public Works Department, parks, police, and as always, a special thanks to finance, who really does a yeoman's job on the CIP every year. CIP is being submitted in accordance with the city's charter. The projects and budget are consistent with past CIPs. The projects are once again grouped into the funded and unfunded projects, and the majority provide, again this year, maintenance rehabilitation or equipment replacement. The total funded budget, including funded and unfunded projects for the six-year period is $178.7 million approximately. That compares with $171.2 million in 2013 last year and $194.4 million in 2012. Total of the funded projects for the six-year period is approximately $48.58 million. That represents 27% of the total six-year budget, and that's including both funded and unfunded. And the cost of unfunded projects for the six-year CIP is approximately $130 million. Projects proposed to be funded for the 2014-2015 budget year totals $25.28 million. That represents 52% of the total funded projects for the six-year CIP. And as we go through the projects, you'll see how it is that this year that number is so high. There's one project in particular with the Tri-County Water Authority that really kicks that number up. Proposed CIP allocation is shown in a pie chart here. The total number of projects proposed in the next six years is 94. Fifteen of those projects are funded and 79 are unfunded. Projects carried forward from the last year's budget are the Community Development Block Program, which I think you'll hear a little bit about tonight. Street rehabilitation programs, snowplow, I won't read them all, you can see them up The projects brought forward from the list of unfunded projects this year is a 12,000-pound hydraulic excavator. And the Tri-County Water Upgrade, that is the project that is the sort of sets this next fiscal year's budget so high at that 50% plus, 50-plus percent. It's a $21 million project, and last year, of course, listed as unfunded, but now being proposed for funding. The funding for this project was included in the most recent sewer water rate study that was adopted by the council in July of 2013, and this project allows the city to increase the water supplied by Tri-County Water Authority, and it will help to stabilize the city's cost for water in the future. Tenth Street Sidewalk, I think you've probably all seen that. That was one of last year's projects. Some new projects for 2014-15-2020. There is a, I won't go through and read all these, as you can see. If you have any questions, though, please, please don't hesitate to ask. One that might take some note here is the Ring Road Phase Two. You're familiar with the Phase One Ring Road of Napoleon, which begins to open up the MIP. Phase Two simply takes that first phase the rest of the way so that it loops to RD Myers Which Chapel Road, I think everyone agrees was a very successful project, and if you've used that intersection, which I'm sure most of you have, you certainly noticed how well that functions. It's a great job. City council action on the capital improvement program. The notice of public hearing was published on Saturday, May the 3rd. The adoption is considered tonight at this meeting. And with that, I'll stand for any questions, as well as the directors who are.
Any questions or comments from the council?
To answer questions.
Looks like a lot of work put into this package, and certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do like the pictures this year.
Okay. There are no other comments for the record? Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next, we have introduction and the reading of Bill 4316.
Our introduce it, your honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4316, an ordinance adopting the City of Blue Springs Capital Improvements Program for fiscal years 2014 through 2015 and through 2019-2020.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4316, an ordinance adopting the City of Blue Springs Capital Improvements Program for fiscal years 2014-15 through 2019-20.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Oh, roll call, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levsey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4490.
Next, we have a discussion on the CDBG Annual Action Plan. Ms. Allen, you going to kick it off?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Again, we were before you at last city council meeting to discuss some of the initial projects that were kind of just up for discussion, feedback, input, and we're just back before you again with the next version of that. We are required to have several kind of public meetings to gather input and get feedback from the general public, as well as those here again tonight to put together our annual action plan, which is due in August to HUD. And just pointing out some of my notes here, what we presented to you were a little bit more detail, kind of going from lowest funding amount to highest funding amount, with the exception of CDBG administration funds, which is essentially, if there's any leftover funds, we do attribute those to administration of the program. But we've kind of given you the top 10 for consideration for this next fiscal year, starting with Downtown Alive. They have requested formally $10,000. Currently, they're funded at $5,000 level. We also have had some interest from Community Services League over the years in just putting together an amount similar to Downtown Alive at that $10,000 amount roughly. Downtown facade grants, we've not had any beyond the America's Community Bank, as you saw the picture of later, looking to secure any kind of funding, and so we've kept that at a lower level of about $15,000. Again, and constantly carry some of that over and lump that together should there be some interest in a larger project. But for now, we've kind of limited it to smaller projects, considering the size of some of the downtown businesses not needing or seeing as large of a fiscal area to be rehabilitated as the bank did. First-time home buyers, we've kept that at the kind of the standard level of $39,000, looking at a maximum of $3,000 per applicant, so 13 individuals. Minor home repair program, we are still kind of getting into the, I guess, funding of that for the current year. So we have all the applicants in, have a waiting list, actually, and we are funding that currently, and we'll see if there's any leftover funds to help fund those yet this calendar year from the waiting list. Then we have a number of possible parks projects, Baumgartner Park development, the tennis courts, I believe we're still looking at the eligibility of those. Oh, they are good? Oh, good. Thumbs up, I like a thumbs up from Mr. Peterman, saying that the tennis courts at Baumgartner Park are eligible projects. They are within the low-mod area, they're service the low-mod area, the low-mod or income area that is, as it currently stands. And Baumgartner Park, as you know, we've had previous projects in there, an extension from Ashton, I believe, to up into the park sidewalks along 22nd Street. So there have been some kind of auxiliary-type improvements along the park, and now looking at possibly making some improvements to the tennis courts within the park. Central Park is also one that's always on the table for any number of options. In this case, restrooms particularly, that would service the community garden in particular. And again, that's something that certainly is an eligible cost. Grounds Park development, trail extension is eligible cost, believe it or not. That part of the city is in a low-mod district, so even though Grounds Park itself is more of a regional type or citywide park, the trail there again can be considered more of a local facility. So with that, again, we didn't identify funding figures for downtown infrastructure, but that's just something kind of more of a placeholder at this time. There are some opportunities for some improvements downtown, as we know, with sidewalks, ADA upgrades, things of that sort that you may be seeing already throughout other parts of the city. So with that, those are kind of the projects on the table. We have about $228,000 to look at. There may be some carryover from the current year's funding, for example, like the Downtown Facade program, if there's no users from that, that could be carried over. Alternately, we are looking at maybe even funding this year some of the minor home repair program applicants who are kind of on that waiting list. So I don't want to say there are tens of thousands of dollars that could be left over, but looking at that $228,000 amount is probably a good estimate at this point. So with that, staff is certainly looking for any additional direction or input. And before we get into that part of it, I do want to give you just a quick summary of the calendar. The summary being, next two meetings you'll be hearing from us would be June 16, city council meeting, so you get a break, the next city council meeting from CDBG discussion, unless there is any interest in doing so. That'll be our next discussion, and we'll be looking at kind of the draft annual action plan in more specifics at that time. So we do, would like to get some more input direction, if not immediately tonight, in advance of that next meeting on June 16. August 4, then, would be the final meeting at which the city council could hold a public hearing and adopt that annual action plan before we send it to HUD by the April 15 deadline. So with that, Mr. Peterman's here as well, if there are any more specific technical questions, Mr. Sandy, Mr. Doyle as well, with some of the specific projects as well that we're putting on the table, obviously, a lot more than $228,000 of projects available. We've not done it yet, but it is possible to kind of combine funds over two years to do a larger project, things like that. So that's certainly an option as well. We don't have to just hit a ceiling of 228 if there's a bigger project or two that could take, you know, more than one year's worth of funding.
Any questions, comments? Councilman Edmonds.
When you talk about a waiting list on the minor home improvement, what are our numbers on that? I mean, are we talking a fairly large list, or?
I believe we got in like 18 or 19 applications. We can fund 11, but there were some applications that didn't qualify, so I think there's like five people on the waiting list.
Five people on the waiting list?
Right. And if we take the facade, Downtown Facade Improvement, 15,000 from this year, we can fund three more of those people.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see that list cut down. I mean, if people are willing to offer to do that, usually those improvements need to be done fairly soon. Most of the time, they're actually, should have been done a lot sooner. So if we can funnel some money in there that's not being used to get some of those improvements done, I feel that's a good use for it, so.
That would be, we would come back to you with an amendment to last year's plan to say we're going to amend these $15,000 to put to this program instead of that program. But that's something that we're considering at this point, so if that's our direction, we can definitely do that.
Okay.
And we could, I'm sorry, your honor, we could certainly look at increasing that number, too. The $55,000, as Mike's mentioning, is, that's for 11 applicants, and that's just kind of our standard rule that we've had.
Yeah, this is the first year that we've actually had over 11 that actually qualified for the program, so. It's getting, it's getting out there, and people are hearing about it and applying for it now, so that's good.
Councilman Carter.
The 15,000 you're talking about, is that from last year? So that would just carry over to the, that doesn't affect this budget?
No, no, no. We put that on there again as Downtown Facade Improvement, another 15,000, but that wouldn't be until October 1 of next, of this year.
What is the CDBG administration fund?
Those are.
I know what it is. How much is it?
Last year, it was $6,000.
$6,000. Just doing some simple math here, if you add that 6,000 in, we could do the top six things on this list and still have money left over.
Correct.
I think it'd be tough to do the Central Park or the Grounds Park at this point, but we could do the top six.
How long can you keep that money? I mean, is there, is there, you know, you get it today, how long do you have before you have to spend those funds?
Well, they don't give you a timeframe specifically. There's a bucket, and if you don't spend the money out of that bucket, then they get on to you, which is kind of what happened to us last year, because we didn't have 10th Street done, we didn't have the bank done. So if you spit, you can have 1.5 times the amount of your most recent award. So our most recent award last year was 212.
212, yeah, 213.
So we can have, you know, one or 275 or something in our account. So whatever your most recent award was, you could have 1.5 times that in your account.
Any other questions?
Councilman Culpepper, we actually have a meeting this week, isn't it?
Yes.
I requested to meet with the HUD coordinator from Kansas City, Missouri, so that we can ensure that we are in full compliance and that we are meeting their expectations now and going forward. And because from time to time, we do receive correspondence from them that talks about compliance with timeframes, getting reports in, and, I mean, it is, it is a process, and it's like completing your annual taxes. It is complicated, and it's like learning the IRS tax code. But nevertheless, when we receive funds, we want to be responsible with that, and we want to be accountable, and we want to be on time, and we want to be certain that we're meeting the criteria established for this. So we have a meeting this week. The other thing I just want to point out is that I think this is the first time we've ever had Community Services League on the list.
That's correct.
That is a new request that we received some feedback from the new local director, and from time to time, social organizations or not-for-profit groups are very interested in obtaining CDBG allocations to help fund and support their local programs. So while there are a number of very important and beneficial not-for-profit organizations in the community, and so I just want to encourage the council that should you choose to start going down this particular path, you might start seeing more attendance and more requests, whereas we have historically put the money into minor home, first-time home buyers, and then infrastructure. You could increase your likelihood that in the future, you could have more requests of this nature.
On that point, actually, do the nonprofits have to exist within the CDBG district, or just by simply being a 501(c)(3), are they eligible?
They're eligible to be nonprofits, but they have to be able to support people in our city with their, with the funds that we provide to them, which, and in this case, the Community Services League does.
Right. Well, the Community Services League and Downtown Alive, I think, both exist within the CDBG.
Sure.
Boundaries anyway.
They do, correct.
But they wouldn't necessarily have to to request funds from this grant.
No.
Okay. No, good question, though, and.
It's very much like the first-time home buyer program and the minor home repair program, they help a person, not the area.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's a question I had. Are we going to specify in that, because we're talking about cash, writing them a check for $10,000 to $15,000, right?
Yeah. There would be a very, kind of a contract with them about what it is they exactly will be providing the money for and how they'd be using it, and they would also have to be able to report to us on a quarterly basis on how they use our funding.
Yeah, because my concern was, is that the Community Service League is scattered throughout eastern Jackson County, and I want to make sure that it does apply to the office, the one in Blue Springs, so.
Exactly. And this, Downtown Alive is a good example. Again, there was a contract and such that we went through with that process as well.
And that's the main thing, is have some accountability of how the money's being spent.
And as Administrator Johnson mentioned, their HUD will be looking closely at those types of.
Right, absolutely.
Of issues, certainly.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns on the, during this discussion? If not, thank you both.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you for the comments.
Next, we have an introduction and reading of Bill 4317, amending the 2013-2014 annual budget.
Our introduce it, your honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4317, an ordinance amending the 2013-14 annual budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4317, an ordinance amending the 2013-14 annual budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levsey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4491.
Thank you. That brings us to Merrill announcements. You received tonight the Nice Report 2013 annual report, Police Department. You'll have an opportunity to go through it. We won't discuss this, I have the report until the next council meeting, but this gives you advanced information on it, so you want to take that with you tonight, and that will be presented in the next, next one. You know, where's, Michael leave? Okay, he left the house. But anyway, keeping with the tradition of Michael Peterman and his dancing skills from a year ago. But anyway, keeping with the tradition of Michael Peterman and his dancing skills from a year ago, winning the People's Choice Award. There was no undue pressure on the team assembled for this year's Dancing with the Stars. And keeping with that tradition, our team won the People's Choice Award with Dancing with the Stars again. Now, this will continue to grow and add pressure on the next team assembled next year, that we only bring back the trophy. That being said, I'm going to defer to one of the smooth dancers from our team this year, our own Councilman Chris Levy.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate that. I did bring the illustrious Mirrorball Trophy to show off tonight. And I will be changing my profile on the city's website to include my new status as an award-winning hip-hop dancer. So just, if anybody would like to view this as you walk out, I have it with me. But I want to thank, of course, our Public Information Officer was my partner for this, Ms. Nakahodo, and then as well as Mr. Peterman, who sort of made a stunt double performance review there that kind of jumped in on us to help us out. So appreciate his help with that as well. But yes, we'll try to keep this in the team for moving forward as well.
Well, you know, interestingly, Kim was approached by people, they did not know she could do flips like that. That shows you how much people pay attention. And I thought I almost gave it away when I said two and three people, but obviously it worked. Okay, that's the next, no, I guess that is, we're going to go straight to Thelsteppanda. You know, we have Memorial Day weekend coming up this next weekend, and I've been doing some dairy graduations with Chief McCoy. And I'll make mention to the fifth graders that Memorial Day is not necessarily a time to cook out and do hot dogs and hamburgers, and the pool opens and all that. There is a meaning for Memorial Day. And Memorial Day is to honor, to honor those people that gave the ultimate, paid the price for the freedoms we enjoy. So we want to remember and honor those men and women who have sacrificed their lives so that we can live in peace and freedom. And I think it can best be summed out, summed up in the words of Abraham Lincoln during his Gettysburg Address, when he said, "From these honored dead, we take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion, that we here highly resolve, that these dead shall not have died in vain." And I think that that was reinforced for me and the First Lady this afternoon, as we listened to Marcus Luttrell from The Lone Survivor. He was actually in Blue Springs this afternoon at the high school, and we actually heard him give the account of what happened during that time period. And it was just chilling to listen to. Some of you have seen the movie Lone Survivor. I have not seen it yet, but I will see it now, after listening to him giving account of it. So anyway, those, that's what Memorial Day, and I was appointed and served for a while on a special commission out of Washington, DC, and it was called the National Day of Remembers. And our sole purpose was to communicate to America, just pause for one minute or for a second during the Memorial Day weekend in honor of those people that have given their lives since the beginning of recognizing. And I don't recall the date when we started recognizing it, but I think it was nineteen seventy-one when we actually made it a national holiday. But anyway, there is meaning to it, and we just need to remember that. That concludes my Thelsteppanda and comments. I don't have any visitors appearance forms, but we do have an executive session to go into. So we would accept the motion to go into executive session.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's do a roll call on that, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Okay, we'll pause for about two, two minutes or so to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.